...of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Mathie?
Here.
Alderman Sage?
Here.
Alderman Malamway?
Here.
Alderman Burgess?
Here.
Alderman Painter?
Here.
Alderman Schmidt?
Here.
Alderman Black?
Here.
Alderman Harmon?
Here.
Alderman Bray?
Here.
Mayor Renner?
Here. And at this point, if we could move on, we have an introduction of Robert Mark as interim community development director, and I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Rasmussen.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the council. I wanted to introduce you, Mr. Bob Mark here, who will be our interim director of community development. He comes to us from being recently the interim city administrator in Lincoln, and he has a long history of experience in economic development, and I couldn't be happier to have him here. I feel he'll do a great job for us, and I would like to ask him if he'd like to make a few comments then.
Thank you.
Please.
Well, I've had an opportunity to meet some of you on the city council, and I appreciate, if you would, take some time to meet with me personally when you have the opportunity and when things slow down just a little bit. I do appreciate you selecting me as the interim community development director for the city of Bloomington. Over the past several weeks, I've had the opportunity to meet with and work with the city manager, the department heads, and the community development department staff. I really am encouraged by their professionalism and their dedication to this community. I look forward to serving the city council, the city manager, and all the citizens and business owners in the city of Bloomington. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, and thank you, Steve. Okay. Next, we have a state-of-the-city address. 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 Geez. It's an early night already, but this is the fifth time that I've given a state-of-the-city address, and as the other four, I want to just briefly explore what our city's current status is and what we've accomplished together over the past year, and what our challenges are as we work together to try to make progress, obviously, for the future. That's why we're all here. None of the ten of us are up here for money. We're up here because we want a better city, a better community, and we need, obviously, to continue to work together to achieve those ends. First of all, in terms of a start, Bloomington is obviously the center of the known universe. We all know that, right? Bloomington is not just a wonderful and incredible city with great assets that we need to begin to leverage. I know that I might be a little bit biased as mayor, so I just want to make sure that we validate this with some external recognition that we've received over about the past year. Amren has named us as a progressive city and awarded grants for energy efficiency products. The Bloomington-Normal General Metropolitan Area has been named as one of the top 10 college towns by Business Insider. We've been named as one of the 11 cities, quote, "You never thought you'd live in but should," unquote, by Huffington Post. Zumper names Bloomington 15th among best cities for new college grads. I had never heard of Zumper, but I love Zumper. USA Today, which of course I've heard of since 1981 or two when they started, has ranked us number three among the top 25 college cities in America. So certainly, we do have achieved national recognition. We have our strategic assets. We have amongst the lowest crime rates in Illinois. We have the highest educated workforce, best trained workforce in downstate Illinois. We have our strategic location. We've got great world-class universities. We have great access through our interstates to many other communities, and the list goes on and on and on. Those are fundamental things that any mayor and any council would inherit. We need as much as possible to leverage those assets as we move forward. Now, over the last year, we have definitely made progress in one of our top priorities, and that is fixing our streets and infrastructure, along with public safety. There's really nothing that's more important to us, that's clear in our statement, and it's clear in our budgets. And among our top priorities, we certainly have had a wide variety of capital improvement plans. If you fail to plan, then you plan to fail, and we have some very clear strategic benchmarks and goals as we move our community forward. Bloomington has been remiss in many areas over about the last generation. That's not up to us to go back and look backwards in the rearview mirror and complain about. It's for us to fix moving forward. We've made some additional progress in terms of open government and transparency. Now, I know, I'll tout yet again, our 100% transparency score from the Illinois Policy Institute, and as much as possible, I do have mayor open houses. We have changed the format, and after about a year of it, I will see whether or not that seems to have worked a little more effectively. It seems definitely to give people more one-on-one information rather than to just meet as a group and maybe allow a few to dominate a conversation, or people who are less comfortable in talking in a group of 15, or a dozen, or 20 people. We have, in addition to that, had, of course, just most recently, town hall, mayoral town hall meetings. We've had, and we'll have tomorrow night, city council member town hall meetings. We have a transportation advisory committee composed of citizens that replaces the old staff, stack, and we, of course, have the police-citizens review board. And I've received, over the last year, more calls from other mayors throughout the country asking about that. What's it look like? How in the world did you get it through, and what's the scope of it? I don't have complete answers to all of those questions yet, because we're still in the process of making that happen, but we are certainly moving forward with that. In terms of economic development, obviously, one of the most important things for us is to continue to leverage our assets for the 21st century, considerable assets. Many of them, we have not. Many of them, or all of them, we are working on. And we're going to continue to administer our comprehensive plan and our downtown plan to help revitalize our inner core and some of our underperforming areas. And those underperforming areas, of course, include Eastland Mall, which isn't necessarily considered to be part of our inner core, but any underperforming areas as we move forward. We've had lots of progress with, over several years, with Hy-Vee, with the O'New Ovation Cinema, with Empire Crossing, including the opening of DSW this year. We've had certainly Green Top Grocery opening, the first multimillion-dollar private investment on Constitution Trail in Bloomington. We've got lots of things to look at. We have had MetroNet come. We have a $33 million expansion program that's begun, bless you, by Westminster Village. We've got the Empire, excuse me, not Empire Crossing, the Grossinger Arena naming rights. We've got Rivian that's finally completed its deal over the last year. We've got even Einstein Bagels. We've got Giordano Pizza. We've got a wide variety of places that show that we're an attractive community for private investment, and we want, obviously, more of that. And we need to continue to diversify, as I say, our local economy. Some of the progress that we've made in our downtown, our cultural historic core, include the downtown task force, some of which we will hear about this evening. We've got signage concept that was added. We have had a jail, or in the process of a jail expansion. It's not just part of downtown, but also part of our mental health program, and in terms of better lighting. And I have to say, on the first Friday of December, when I was in downtown Bloomington and just looking around, I felt like I had died and gone to heaven, because the downtown was alive. It was thriving, and that's what we want to make sure that people understand about our downtown, that it's not just first Fridays before the holidays, that it is a destination for people who either live in our community or from other places. We will all benefit from a revitalized downtown. And as we move forward, we have some new projects immediately on the horizon. Obviously, the Electrolux Building has been something that we've been, staff and all of us have been working on for a long time. That's critical. It's on our Route 66 corridor. We are getting a much better share of our Route 66 visitor's center traffic. We had pretty much left that on the table. People used to drive from Pontiac, Illinois, drive around us and go to Atlanta, Illinois. Nothing more wrong with those two cities, but now they're coming through both Bloomington and Normal. And we're fairly soon going to be having one of the signs that Normal has. There's only 50, or excuse me, 30 of them in the entire state of Illinois that are kind of interactive signs. It's hard to explain without looking at them. They're art deco signs, and we'll have that in our downtown square in addition, obviously, to our visitor's center. But if you ever go in and look at the visitor's center, and it'll only take you about four minutes, if that, just kind of glance to see where people are coming from as they sign in. People from Singapore, people from China, people from North Dakota, people from all over the United States and all over the world coming to our downtown, and we want more things downtown to keep them there so that they can have a great time, maybe return, but at least while they're here, drop some of their money in our community. And certainly, those are some of the challenges that we have. We have the, making progress on the old Bloomington Junior High School, and we've been in negotiations with Eastland Mall about how they need to reinvent themselves. They understand that. They're making some marginal progress right now, but we're talking about something much more major for the long term. So we have our challenges cut out for us, you know, as we move forward. There's no question about it. And one of the challenges that we face, in addition to diversifying our local economy and economic development, of course, are fiscal issues. Now, let's also put things into perspective. Compared to other jurisdictions, we are doing quite well. We have the second highest bond rating that you can possibly get. But that doesn't mean that we don't have fiscal challenges, especially coming up, because our revenues are flat, are declining, and our expenses are increasing. Expenses may only be increasing by about 2%, but we are also starting off from a low benchmark. If you go back to around 2009, roughly, we had 850 full-time equivalent employees. Today, we're somewhere around 750, give or take. So we have already trimmed some of the fat. Doesn't mean you can't trim more fat, but it also means, then, that we have to make tough choices. We've either got to cut some services that may very well be quite popular, or we need to try to figure out more creative ways to deliver services without cutting them, or we have to figure out ways to impose either user fees and, obviously, the dreaded T-tax word. So those are all of the challenges that we face in this fiscal year and in the following fiscal years, you know, going forward. But the most, I would say, one of the most important things I would ask all of us as elected officials is, let's all have a renewed commitment to work together. We all do want what's best for our community. We're not always going to agree, but let's have a renewed commitment to work together as ourselves, even if we're not happy with each other. Let's make that known, and then move on, see if there's something that we can do. Also, with our intergovernmental partners, as well as our chamber and non-chamber business community and our citizens, doing as much as possible to try to improve communication. We can always do that, because if we can avoid misunderstandings, sometimes very serious misunderstandings, I think we will work together much more effectively, you know, as we move forward in the future. So, again, I ask for your help and continued indulgence and ideas and creative energy for the next year, and thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Thank you, all of our citizens, department heads, for all that you've done, and I look forward to working with you and making progress over the next year. Thank you. That's all I have to say. Thanks. At this point, we move to public comment, and I'm going to read these in the order in which they were given to me by whoever gave them to me. I'm assuming maybe it was our city clerk. We're going to start off with, I'm going to read them in groups of three. You have approximately three minutes. We have no more than three minutes, I'm sorry. Up to three minutes, and I think we will be able to accommodate everybody with any problem this evening. I'm going to read them in groups of three. Jim Waldorf, who I know is in the audience, come forward, and I see Jim Pearson, and I see Tim Tilton, and then we, just in terms of, since I've only got six, Tyson Moore, Donna Boland, and Scott Steimerling. But we'll start out with Jim Waldorf.
Mr. Mayor, thanks for having me. Members of the council, I'm happy to be here again. I'm here to talk to you about the Creativity Center as a member of the Board of the Friends of the BCPA. Earlier today, I sent out a business plan that was created back in 2009 when we had $1 million to renovate the city-owned building and a business plan to show that we could run that building with renters using the space once it was rehabbed, or even some while it was being rehabbed. It's 2018. We still have about $1 million. We still have a building that's unremodeled. We still have renters interested in using the building. We've got a plan that was, an opportunity that's in the budget or in the consent agenda at this time to fill the development director position. This is a position explained in the memo of understanding between the city and the Friends of the BCPA that will be a position that will raise funds to cover the expenses of some of the shortfall in the BCPA budget, as well as to raise funds to help renovate that building. That's a position that's been in the budget for many years and has been unfilled after it was filled originally. The gentleman that had filled it was a trailing spouse with a wife who had an opportunity for a big career move out on the East Coast, and so he left us before he really got a chance to get started. We've been trying to fill the position ever since, or wanting to fill the position ever since, and it's been a budgeted position, but for some reason, it has not been filled. I'm not privy to those reasons. So I would urge you to let the position be filled, to let us get on with remodeling the building, to let us spend the privately raised funds, and get on to raising more private funds to rehab a city building and have an operational creativity center that works in conjunction with our performing arts groups in the city, as well as with the BCPA. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Again, next is Jim Pearson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Renner and city council. I'm pleased to be here to share with you what the Vantage Group believes should be your top priority for revitalization of downtown Bloomington. Most of you probably know me as a member of the Planning Commission for the last 10 years, but I'm here tonight as president of the Vantage Group Limited, a local developer for 23 years, to provide the real first project for the downtown revitalization needs. Our experience as a developer with public-private partnership experience was with the city in 1995 when we were awarded the new contract for the Bloomington Police Department Facility and Parking Structure Site and Building, a $7.6 million project. Tonight, the same Vantage Group proposes a new public-private partnership to complete a comprehensive solution with a unique design, a prime location, and then building the project. I've studied the downtown business district for the last 18 months, looking for a unique project. I found that project, but it's not this project. But I kept coming back to the underlying need of the downtown, the one that everyone says we need to bring the people downtown for a strong reason. What would that reason be? Is it an event at the arena, or is it for shopping? It's for both reasons. The best and number-one project solution today is to finish the arena project, the way it should have been done 11 years ago to succeed. The Vantage Group will put together the team to design-build a new conference center with an adjoining 110-room hotel connected to the arena. In summary, the Vantage Group Limited will submit to the interim city manager a detailed scope and draft outline of how the Vantage Group will accomplish this within 10 to 14 days. Basically, the Vantage Group will issue a national RFP to recruit and secure interested parties with experience in hotel operations and conference center successes. The RFP will ask for construction estimates, local general contractors, capital lenders, and investors. The key factor in any project is the land being secured for the conference center hotel. The city owns the property, therefore costing the city nothing compared to the $8 million offered by the Huff family for a level site ready for construction. I have brought you a solution and a goal for success. Are you willing to step up and join the partnership team concept for Bloomington's revitalization as the new premier city of the Twin Cities? Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Tim Tilton and then Tyson Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here to speak to the Creativity Center and here to support the work of the Friends of the BCPA, which were appointed by the mayor some time ago. They have created the memorandum of understanding, which Jim Waldorf referred to. It's an agreement to raise money, not to spend taxpayers' money, and I think that that point needs to be really brought home. It's an opportunity for us to solicit donations, private donations, not taxpayer dollars, and it's an opportunity for us to raise funds through grants. I urge you to pass this to further the partnership of the Friends of BCPA and the city. I further recognize and applaud you, the city council and mayor, for reaching out in a creative way, looking outside the box for solutions that are private and public partnerships, which we hear so much about in today's world. It will be an improvement for the Creativity Center and will relieve financial burdens in the future for our taxpayers. We also support the filling of the director's position, which has been left, the developmental director's position, which has been left vacant, which, again, Jim already referred to. We thank you for your time, council.
Thank you, Tim. Next, Tyson Moore, and then Donna Boland.
Hi, everybody. As you talk about the downtown task force plan today, I just wanted to offer a couple of thoughts that I hope you keep in mind as you read through it. The first one is that remember that the parts are interrelated but separable, so if you have a certain perspective over the viability of the catalyst plan, I hope that doesn't taint your perspective of the other aspects of the plan. There's a lot of really good ideas here that I see. The place-making ideas, I think, are excellent and are something that could be implemented with pretty minimal time and commitment, some of them, and could have a big impact for that amount of time. The second thing that I hope you keep in mind is that I hope you don't reject aspects of the plan just because you think this is something that the city shouldn't fund in full. If there's anything I saw as I was watching the task force discussions, is that there's a lot of people in this town who are very passionate about what they're doing, and there are people like myself who would be willing to contribute time and money and effort to bring these things about. So if the city sets the plan and enables things, you know, sets the infrastructure in a way, I think there are people who will step up and do it. There are people who are opposed to these things, who don't think downtown is worth investing in, think it's a way to try to meet them where they are as well, because if there's really not a need and there's not people who are interested in doing this, then maybe there isn't a desire to do it. But I think there's enough of us who are passionate that we can give it a good go. I think, for example, of the decorative sidewalks, I mean, we have a lot of artists in town that can help contribute to that kind of thing. City lays the framework. We can bring the, we can bring the time and the energy to that. So I look forward to your discussion on that and seeing how it turns out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tyson. Donna Boland and then Scott Steimerling.
I'm Donna Boland. I live in Ward 2, and I would like to thank the alderman that responded to my email, because it makes me feel that I'm heard. I'm here to talk about pension spiking. This is the fourth time I've been to the podium, and I've sent three detailed emails to you since the court has made its ruling back in March of 2017. At the November 27 meeting, an employee, it was reported that an employee accrued the $28,000, and that caused an accelerated payment of $22,453 that became a liability for the city. Her proposed retirement date is January 19 of this year. In the bills and payroll for today's meeting, there is an accelerated payment listed as $22,500. Those two numbers don't match, so I come to the conclusion that this is an additional person. And at the November 27 meeting, Mr. Jergens stated that he would bring something forward regarding a policy change, and there's only one more meeting left in January. And with a $3 million deficit, I think it's important to address this policy, because the staff is desperately trying to find ways to close that $3 million gap. There are 250 employees, about a third of the employees that are under the current policy, and if you multiply that times the $22,500 of these accelerated payments over the past month, that's $5.6 million over time. So I just urge you to change the policy as soon as possible. The legal issues to the side, and as soon as you do it, follow Springfield's model and move forward. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Steimerling.
I brought this before, the council before, about the streets and the infrastructure. There were times, especially today, that there was snow in front of public buildings. Now, I call public buildings the library, the government center, city hall, the fire department, the police department. Doesn't matter. But, you know, the sidewalks were absolutely packed, and there is no way anybody in a wheelchair could get up there. And as far as the infrastructure in this town goes, and I've addressed this before, nobody seems to care. I mean, if somebody is living in that area and they are an administrator of the city, then it's amazing how quick it gets done. If they aren't, then heck with it. And there was a person that no longer resides there in my neighborhood, and I saw them lifting a wheelchair with their granddaughter in it, and that had to weigh at least 150 pounds or more. The city was out the next morning after they called Mr. Karsh. But, I mean, if the person that screams aloud is the one that gets the results, and I think it's very sad. And regarding this pension spiking, there is absolutely no excuse for that, none, except what's in it for me? Not what's best for the people, what's in it for me? And when Mr. Rasmussen took over, it's amazing how quick that door to the city administration, there was glass in there. When Mr. Hales was here, it was solid wood. I suggested to him to take the door, cut it in half, and no, that's not good enough. And city hall does belong to the taxpayers, not to a few select people. Thank you.
Thank you. We move right along to our consent agenda. Are there any items that any members of the city council would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Alderwoman Bray?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to remove consent item 7C.
7C by Alderwoman Bray. Alderwoman Schmidt?
I'd like to pull 7E.
7E. Anybody else? Okay. If there isn't, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of items 7C and 7E?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Harmon. Is there a second? A second by Alderman Malamway. If you go ahead and vote, obviously, I is in favor. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We're going to go ahead and start with item 7C, in the order they were pulled, by Alderwoman Bray. Bray.
Thank you, Mayor Renner. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, and this is in regards to the 2018 revised calendar of scheduled meetings, the meeting dates and times of city council and boards and commissions of the city of Bloomington, Illinois, calendar year 2018 revised. And my motion is to strike the committee, the whole meeting, proposed for January 16, 2018, and approve the remainder of the calendar as proposed. The city code does not automatically reschedule a committee of the whole meeting following, if that meeting falls on a holiday. And at this juncture, the rescheduling of the committee of the whole meeting for 11618 is not a required reschedule per the code. And at this time, we're very much in a time of study on our budget and gathering constituent feedback in regards to budget needs and preparing for the sessions. And I recommend that we simply strike, again, my motion would be to strike the date of January 16, 2018, from the 2018 revised calendar of scheduled meetings.
So the very first one that's listed on page one of our packet. Is that correct? Excuse me, the very first committee, the whole meeting, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Yes, Mayor Renner.
Okay, just to clarify. Okay. And again, your reason was that it's not necessarily required because the 15th falls on a Martin Luther King the next day? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Sage. I think, just to clarify for the public, that particular day was supposed to be a public presentation by the downtown task force on the anchor project for downtown. The rest of it will be discussed today. I think as some, one of our people, I think it was Tyson Moore, had mentioned, there are several items within the downtown task force, even if you, they may be all there related, but that doesn't mean that necessarily if you support some of them, that you would necessarily support all of them and vice versa. So that was fairly detailed when I see people from our, some of our intergovernmental partners from the library board and for Connect Transit, who were interested in this because that would have been the broader discussion. Obviously, they're here tonight. We're not discussing it tonight under any circumstances, but that's just the backdrop of that. Alderwoman Burgess.
Well, Mayor, I would disagree with that statement that that's the backdrop, but I'll wait till I'm...
Oh, of course.
Yeah, well, I would disagree that that's the backdrop because the meeting that's scheduled for next week doesn't have any way, shape or form seem to comport with our usual committee of the whole structure and meetings. And so the meeting for next week may be some meeting to gather various information, but certainly does not seem to meet the criteria for committee of the whole. But at any rate, my motion is on the floor and I've had a second.
Okay, so would that mean that you would not have any problem with me calling a special session then?
Well, Mayor, that would be up to you. I've made a motion and I've had a second.
Okay. Alderwoman Burgess, sorry.
I have a question. There are three other meetings on the schedule that are scheduled for Tuesdays as opposed to Mondays due to conflicts with holidays. Were you also moving to cancel those meetings?
No, my motion clearly stated that I'm striking only the January 16, 2018 meeting. Thank you.
Can you please explain why the January 16 meeting, especially given that two other boards that we interact with are interested in having a joint meeting next week to specifically address city council and to discuss specific items with them? And they've already notified their membership of that and are prepared to have that meeting.
Well, Alderman Burgess, I don't, again, disagree with that presumption and this idea that the committee of the whole was set up. It's not been set, obviously. It's not in the calendar. I don't know that the other aldermen had an opportunity for input into this work session and these various features of this work session. And perhaps this work session will go forward, perhaps these discussions will occur, but they certainly don't seem to align with the committee of the whole efforts.
Alderman Black.
I have a question about something unrelated to, I mean, about this motion, but not this topic.
Go for it.
So we had talked on a couple of occasions about having the fifth Monday reserved and I'm not seeing that reserved on here. Do we have a comment as to why? That's not...
Let's see. Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Jergens.
I'm not sure I have the answer, but I will try and give you the answer. I think that staff heard that come from council. But because we could not get the other entities kind of booked on that fifth Monday, I think the thought was, and city manager Asmussen or the clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, the idea would be that we would try to schedule those, but we would have to do some advanced coordination, so those would just be called as special meetings, since we don't know exactly who those other meetings would be with at this point in time.
I think that's a safe assumption that we didn't necessarily know in advance that we could even have a meeting or what the subject matter might be on that meeting. I think, who it might even be with, we thought that it, I think there was general consensus that we did not plug dates into those meetings for those reasons.
Sure. I mean, I think this is an opportunity for Bloomington to show some leadership for our intergovernmental partners, to at least put it on the calendar. I mean, we, I've sat up here now for four years and we've talked about the same thing again and again and again. And if, unless there's some sort of impetus to make that happen, it's never going to happen. And I was enjoying the conversation I heard today on GLT with Steve and Mark Peterson in Normal about the cooperation that we're going to be seeing forthcoming. What better way than to put a date in the calendar, invite our partners, and we can figure out, cancel it or...
Cancel it if necessary.
Adjust it as appropriate. But I don't want to...
So is that an amendment to the amendment?
I guess I was more seeking clarification. You know, I don't want to be amending this complicated conversation yet.
Other than in scheduling, Alderwoman Howman, you look perplexed.
We've, I mean, I've only been on the council three years, but we've typically had a meeting that Tuesday after Martin Luther King Day, since the city's closed on Monday. So, I mean, it's, and I'm not saying just because we've done it before that we have to do it again, but I mean, it's been, it's been on the calendar in previous years.
Okay. Alderwoman Burgess.
Yeah, and that was the point I was going to make, that it has traditionally been placed on the calendar for Tuesdays. And again, there are other meetings in this proposed schedule that fall on Tuesdays. So I'm really quite confused as to why this particular meeting needs to be canceled, especially given that we've already discussed and have some of our community partners who want to participate in that meeting and have a conversation in a way they have not yet been able to, to sit across from council and directly discuss some of their needs and to make sure that their voices are heard. And I'm very concerned if we were to now cancel this meeting, even if there were some goal to reschedule in the future, it might send a message that we're not interested in listening to people like Connect Transit and the library board. And I'm sure that is not the message we as a council want to send. I think we want to be open with those individuals and encourage them to advocate for themselves so council can make well-informed, educated decisions moving forward. We all know we've got a lot of tough decisions to make. So while the motion may be well-meaning, I'm very concerned about the message it would send under the circumstances and hope that we can move forward with the meeting next week as planned. And certainly, if for whatever reason this were to pass, I hope the mayor would listen to Connect Transit and the library board and go ahead and call a special meeting so we can move forward as planned. Thank you.
Alderwoman Bray, did you want to respond?
I would disagree that the premise that this precludes any kind of input. And in fact, I would say that there are many excellent ways to gather community input that would simply be styled in a very different manner. We have a method of operating here in Bloomington. We have business meetings that are set by our code. We have our city council meetings, which have certain structure. The code does require that meetings after a holiday for city council be immediately reverted into, you know, a Tuesday if that was a Monday holiday. But it certainly does not require that for committee of the whole. So that would be the difference, Alderman Burgess. But I would say that, in fact, these matters are so important that I think it's important for us to take them in pieces and to meet and have substantive discussions about them in the mechanisms that we already have in place in the form of our various committees having interaction with them and individual aldermen having an opportunity to speak rather than some kind of a structure that's been introduced here. And you talk about this meeting being planned, while our city code says that the city, the committee of the whole is to be planned by our city manager. And that's not what I'm hearing in the feedback that I've had. I think this meeting's been planned by someone other than our city manager. And so with that said, I, you know, I regret to say that I don't believe that there was a lot of input from the rest of the council as to how this meeting was styled, how it was set up and how the community was engaged. And I think that's unfortunate and it's unfortunate that our community leaders and friends were led to believe that there was overwhelming council support for such a meeting at this juncture.
Point of order.
Yes, I'm sorry.
We're focusing on the what of the meeting next Monday and not, and I don't think that's the intent of the, of this particular item.
The schedule.
Of the schedule, yeah.
Right, okay. Well, that, is it, Mr. Jergens, I'll turn to you.
Yeah, I mean, as stated, I think, you know, you're having some debate here on the merit of the motion and the rationale behind it. So it's discretion here, but it feels like this is germane to the motion.
It is germane, okay. That's, and I think that's sort of the broader theme. Just to clarify, I think for the record, the, there was a downtown task force that was formed and it seemed that there were two components, one that was more controversial and different fundamentally, an anchor project that would be presented with our intergovernmental partners at a separate meeting from the one that we're going to have tonight, which were the other pieces of the downtown task force. And I do see some of the members of the downtown task force here this evening who were here, you know, for that reason. So it was, I think from the standpoint of planning, I think we were talking about planning meaning, okay, what day is it? It just tended to be the role of the city manager and mayor who put together the schedule. And so that's why, that was the rationale, regardless of how this motion turns out, that tonight we have part of the downtown task force and later. And again, it was a mayoral task force, but it was approved by the council. And this is just part of the, it was supposed to be a two-part process to report back the findings, regardless of whether or not the council adopts them.
And I was interrupting on a point of order and I wanted to finish my thought if that's...
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I didn't realize you had more. Apologize.
So, thank you. So at any rate, my motion is that this meeting be struck. I think there are important and more impactful and efficient ways in order to gather this input as a member of the downtown task force that serves faithfully. I think that there should be some input now from the city council on how the city council would like to go forward to garner and get this information from the committee rather than this being dictated by the committee chair from downtown council. Thank you, downtown task force. Thank you.
Alderwoman Burgess.
And I don't want to belabor this because I think we are getting off track, but it's just really hard for me to understand why it is you do not want to sit down and have a conversation with the library board and Connect Transit, which is all next week is. I'm not sure what is driving that particular thought process and how that is viewed as an ineffective or inefficient way to get information from which this council can make a decision. And certainly, it is something in my discussions with both Connect Transit and the library board, it is my impression very strongly, especially from Connect Transit, they want that opportunity. So I do not see why we would deny them that, the opportunity to sit down in a collaborative manner to have this conversation. When everyone's in the room, everyone can have a discussion. And so again, I hope that we can do this because I think it will be productive. I think it will be the type of conversation we have not yet been able to have. And I think it will lead to a good outcome, whatever that may be, because each of these different entities has different perspectives. The downtown task force was asked to look at what is best for downtown. The library will advocate for what is best for the library and Connect will advocate for what is best for them and then city council will bring it all together. And I don't see how we can do that. I certainly do not want to be in a position where I'm asked to advocate for the library or for Connect Transit. They do that best. They know what they need best.
Alderman Sage. Just again, a few brief comments. And naturally, I second the motion. I will be voting in favor of it here in a minute. We've had this conversation off and on for the 10 years that I've been on the council, not just for the last couple of years. And it has included the library board previously. And we have already invested, as near as I can tell, almost a half a million dollars in expanding the library and planning for and expanding the library where it is now.
I would call it point of order at this point in time. That is the conversation we can have next week if this meeting moves forward.
I call point of order on Alderman Burgess.
Whoa, 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 okay, all right. It is true. It is the conversation. I will turn to Mr. Jergens. Is this... No, no, I will yoke back. That's okay.
Because she's been given the floor to explain her point of view and I think Alderman Sage should also have his opportunity. This is substantive.
I am going to refer to Mr. Jergens. Is this also discretionary or is this, are we getting too far off into the debate over the actual stuff that we would talk about next week?
So limited room here in terms of trying to figure out whether or not you want to have this meeting. So, you know, to the extent you can kind of, you know, people have all been weighing in on their thoughts on that. I think to the extent the chair is, I'm sure here, this is probably a prime opportunity to let people finish that conversation.
Okay, so I can do that. I just wanted to be certain and partly because I am interested, I will turn back to Alderman Sage, because I found out about this about 15 minutes before I came in. So I am interested in figuring out, I mean, I think I know a little bit of the background, but I'm interested in a little bit of this as well. So we will all a little bit of leeway. Alderman Sage.
That's okay. I will, at the risk of creating some uncertainty around the appropriateness of my comments, yeah, I will be in favor of voting for the motion here in a minute. And if there are other comments that others would like to make, that'd be fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Black.
Yeah, I need some help understanding a thing here. I was not aware that this conversation was going to be taking place. But are we suggesting that if we don't, if we strike 11618, that there is no committee of the whole next month, next week? Period. We're just not going to have one. Okay. And that does not preclude the ability of the mayor potentially to call a special meeting, doesn't end that conversation. We're just trying to do some formal thing here to stop a one-time scheduled meeting, correct? I don't see, I don't see objecting.
We'll turn to the maker of the motion.
There is no committee of the whole meeting currently on this calendar, excepting a meeting for 11518, which is the Martin Luther King holiday. The proposed revision to the 2018 calendar is to slide in a meeting for January 16, 2018 as a committee of the whole. Alderman Burgess has continued to act as a chair of a downtown task force that I believe finished its charge some time ago. And it appears has appropriated this meeting to go forward in a style and in a manner of her choosing and without conferring with other members of the council. And I would suggest that in order to gather the information that we need to be productive, efficient and appropriate, that we blend in the work that is important to our downtown into our usual scheduled meetings to include our city council meetings, future committee of the whole meetings, and then certainly allowing opportunity for individual members of the city council to meet with their constituents and garner input before we go about a three-and-a-half-hour meeting and completing an hour and a half survey and sitting down with committee leaders and community leaders and taking their time and perhaps giving them false hope about the direction the council would like to go.
Okay, Alderman Black.
Yeah, I hear you and I hear that. I'm going to be voting no because I think we need to have those fifth meetings, Mondays of the month reserved for these intergovernmental agreements. You can call it a committee of the whole or a special meeting or a work session, whatever you want to call it. I think there's some value in hearing what our intergovernmental partners have to say. Thank you.
Okay. That's it. Okay. That was a rather abrupt end. So essentially, what the motion is on the floor is to amend, if I'm going to restate your motion, so that's why I'm looking at you, Alderwoman Bray, to amend the schedule to remove the committee of the whole that is scheduled for Tuesday, the 16th Tuesday. As I had mentioned, the backdrop, only as everybody now knows, is that it is, was a date that we had set. date that we had set for discussion with Connect Transit and the library board. That was the substance of that particular meeting, okay? It is possible, well, possible, it is within the prerogative of the mayor to recall that meeting, and it certainly, regardless of how this, you know, vote turns out, that would be my intention, and it would be my intention because we are talking about improving communication between our intergovernmental partners regardless of how, how the council acts. And it is not unusual, whether it was Alderman Sage who was head of the budget task force, it is not unusual for a budget, or, excuse me, a task force chair to continue to work until they presented their information to the, the council, and then their role, you know, is discharged. So, anyway, that's all I have to say at this point. Let's go ahead and vote on the motion that's on the floor. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman, Homan, did you have a point?
No, I just wanted to...
Please.
Just want to clarify that a vote yes means taking the committee of the whole off next week, a vote no means keeping the committee of the whole.
No, vote, if, if this motion were to fail, then we'd get another motion to approve the 2018.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, so if this motion passes, it means that this meeting is struck as a committee of the whole meeting from the agenda.
No committee of the whole, Indiana.
Thank you.
Correct, okay. Right, okay. Okay, the I-votes have it by five to four. Madam Cork, would you announce the nays, please?
Alderman Mathie, Alderman Burgess, Alderman Black, and Alderman Harmon.
You make me feel like wanting to announce those four of you, sorry. Okay. All right, at this point, we move on to the next item on our agenda, and the next item on our agenda was pulled by Alderwoman Schmidt. Alderwoman Schmidt pulled item 7E, if I am understanding that.
Correct. This is a memorandum of understanding that creates a position for the BCPA and the cultural district, or the Friends of the BCPA, to engage in fundraising and begin to garner more private dollars in support of, of the entirety of the BCPA. And I appreciate the advocacy from Mr. Tilton and Mr. Waldorf on this, and, you know, I've been on the cultural commission myself, so I have a lot of positive feelings about where this wants to, where, what the intention of this agenda item is. There are a number of questions that have been raised, some by me, some by others on council, and some by members of the community about this position. And I, and I can enumerate what some of those questions are, but I am uncomfortable approving this or, or voting in support of this at this time. I think what we've done is in our conversation and rejection of venue works proposal to take over the BCPA, we've said what we don't want. We haven't really talked about what we do want, and we haven't really found any clarity on how much private dollars we have to spend, where we're going with the cultural creativity center. And, and I'm also really unclear about why this position would be a city position with a pension, and Miller Park Zoological Society Development Director is paid for by the Zoological Society. So there's so many questions that have arisen because of this, that I, I think that it would benefit the, the BCPA and the Friends of, of the cultural commission to have a fuller conversation about this and, and really get that road ahead laid out. So I would propose that we not approve this. I, I'm not exactly sure how to, how to make this motion. I, I think what I'm proposing is that we move this to either a work session or a committee of the whole conversation where we can look at the entirety of this and, and really get clarity and, and, and support for where we want this to go.
Okay, so you're, you're, you're really not moving to deny this. You are moving to have this in a, at a discussion in a future...
Well, I'm, I'm moving to deny it tonight.
Tonight, but...
With a, with a proposal that it move to a larger conversation. So table it.
Table it.
What is specific date?
Do we want a specific date? A date certain?
Well, by, by a certain day.
Well, I think the question would be, is it appropriate as a work session item before a regular council meeting, or should it be committee of the whole? And sooner rather than later, because I, you know, as Mr. Tilton, Mr. Waldorf said, they've been waiting patiently for clarification on a number of items related to this, and I think we, we owe that to them, but...
We don't have, obviously don't, I just voted not to have a committee of the whole this month, it wouldn't be possible probably to put it on there anyway.
No, but it could be a work session.
But, but it could be a work session. So how about if we say, what is 60 days from today? I'm sorry, I'm really bad here.
Steve, could you maybe...
Jay, or, or, that's a good idea.
Ask him, oh, one of the...
How long, how long would it take? Could we, could we do all this in 60 days?
We're ready to go. We can do it as early as the next meeting in January.
Okay, so I was just trying to give us a little bit of leeway here. So how about if we say by March 1st?
But do we have items that are critical timing-wise on either work? I'm, I'm looking at Steve here.
Oh, Steve.
Items that are, that are critical on either our work session or committee of the whole agenda?
Thank you. We got a little comic relief there.
We can certainly get it by, the answer done and get a presentation back to you by March 1st.
Okay, I, I know that Jay has all of my questions, and he, and you've probably received other ones as well.
Is there anything you'd want to add briefly, Jay?
I think one of the things that I've heard the most about this position is, it's not a new position.
Right.
It's a position that's been vacated since 2014.
Right.
So I think that's been the biggest, this is a budgeted position that's been there, we just have not filled it before.
Right.
I guess the biggest misconception going forward to pass along of everything I've been hearing is it's not a new position.
Right, but I think that there are many other questions that, that I don't have clarity on, and, and I honestly think that if we, if we try to unpack the cultural commission and just do this one thing at a time, we're never going to have the clarity and the support that it deserves. I, I would like to see us really get our hands around what we want this to be and, and launch it and move on.
Mr. Rasmussen, you think we're, let me, given that we've had, it, it seems like March 1st is a, is a reasonable time, is that?
No later than.
No later than March 1st?
Yes, not later than March 1st. We can certainly do that, and we could do it as a work session before a city council meeting.
Okay, and that, is that, actually, we don't have, we have a...
Is that specific enough, Jeff?
Okay, so we have a motion to...
Table this to...
To table this...
To a work session.
To a work, well, to a work session to occur not before March 1st.
Not later than March 1st.
Or not, not, excuse me, not later than March 1st. Thank you for the correction. So that made by Alderwoman Schmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Homan. Any further discussion? Okay, if everyone will go ahead and vote. Okay, there is an eight to one vote on this. Madam Cork, there is one nay to announce, thankfully, for your voice.
Alderman Black.
It's a short nay, okay. All right, at this point, we move on to our regular agenda, and we have a very, oh, we have a 10-minute presentation and a 20-minute council discussion on part of the downtown task force final report, and I will turn this over to, I, I see some task force members, I don't know how you all have divvied this up, but I will turn this over to you, Alderwoman Burgess.
Good evening. We do have a couple of task force members here. I don't know if you guys want to move up, those of you who are here, if you, okay, you all are saying you're comfortable where you are. So I think they're going to leave me here, although certainly anyone on the task force should feel free to jump in at any point in time because this has been a very collaborative process throughout. Oh, good, that was simple. All right, by way of, of basic reminder, the Bloomington Downtown Task Force was formed on May 8th, 2017, with the explicit goal of establishing top priorities for downtown Bloomington for the next three to five years, and to come up with some sort of action plan to move those priorities forward. And I think one of the reasons for this is because we've had numerous plans dealing with the downtown area that make a number of recommendations. So it is helpful to kind of narrow those down in a manageable way. We were also asked at the time that the task force was formed by council to really provide a clear line of sight between those recommendations that we make and the existing planning documents. And hopefully you will find the final report to have accomplished that goal, as you hoped it would. Each section contains a number of citations back to our master plans, so you'll know where we got some of these ideas and why we believe that there is firm justification for doing that. And I think I really appreciated this guidance given to us from council because it really honors and recognizes the incredible amount of work and expertise that has gone into developing our master plans. So at no point in time was our goal to in any way repeat the activities that had already been repeated, but basically just to build upon them. As a reminder, the task force started out with nine members. Tricia Stiller, during the pendency of this board, did go on to staff, and at that point in time moved into a staff role. And, but I would really like to thank the members who volunteered their time and efforts in this endeavor. I mean, they had to go through hundreds of pages, maybe thousands, probably hundreds, hundreds of pages of, of documents, and educate themselves about what they already said. It was certainly very educational to me. I, I was, you know, thought I was familiar with the plan and realized that once I began digging much more deeply, I had forgotten a lot of what was in there. And, and really embraced this role, knowing that when it comes to downtown, oftentimes these can be very robust, passionate, and, and sometimes very, you know, difficult conversations. There's a, a lot of, of differing public opinions on downtown, and so knowing, even knowing that, they embrace this role, and in many instances went above and beyond, not just showing up to meetings, but getting to know our plans by heart, being able to recite them, and also taking the initiative to meet with stakeholders and to give extra time. So the amount of time you see in terms of meetings and meeting minutes really does not reflect the amount of time that these individuals dedicated to the city and the furtherance of this goal. The process was relatively straightforward. We started with the planning documents, which were provided to all of our members. Those included the Bloomington Comprehensive Plan, also known as Bring It On Bloomington. It also included the Downtown Strategic Plan, which is often referred to as the FAR Plan, and a few other smaller plans, such as the Downtown Streetscape Plan, looking at the downtown area. We also supplemented that with staff presentations to make sure we were aware of current conditions. We talked about placemaking, we talked about safety, we talked about a, a number of different items as they related to those plans, and had a number of members of staff come visit us and, and give us that. We also held a public listening session that was well-attended, and of course, all of our meetings were public, publicly posted, and we encouraged, especially during the early process, we encouraged more of a roundtable-type meeting so that people who were there could participate and feel comfortable providing their feedback to the task force as we continued our work. The initial preliminary findings were reported on August 34th, 31st, and then the final report was ratified on October 24th, and we're very pleased to be presenting a part, portion of that to you here today. Final report organization, we were encouraged by Tom Deberiner, the director of our community development department, to begin looking at ways to improve the downtown area in three different categories: placemaking, supportive, and catalyst. And, and so placemaking is, is very, very straightforward. It is those things that make the downtown area a nice place to visit. We recognize primarily improvements in placemaking will benefit those who already visit the downtown area, which is a very worthwhile endeavor. Supportive is what we would consider those givens, right? We want infrastructure, 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 that is the supportive. So we didn't make a lot of recommendations in that area because we know that this council knows that's a given, that downtown infrastructure needs to be taken care of, but we did make some recommendations with regard to parking. And then finally, the catalyst, which by far took up the least amount of time on the task force. We really did focus on the placemaking more so than anything because that is the least, the least investment that can be made with potentially the highest return. And this was an area where I found it very interesting because Tom encouraged us to look at these categories in a way that was different than my preconceived notions. And I thought this was very important for the entire group. We learned a lot through this process, and this was one of those areas. And Tom encouraged us to look at a catalyst project in a much narrower focus than, than perhaps I had been, and it only are those projects that are likely to bring large numbers of new people into the downtown area on a daily basis, with that caveat. And any project that does not do that, while beneficial and, and perhaps desirable in the downtown area, belongs in the placemaking category. And that was quite a shift for me as we worked through this process. So I want to just give you a few examples today of what's in the report. I'm not going to try to duplicate or repeat to you everything that's in there. I do encourage you to look at it closely, and especially look at those citations back to the master plans. But I wanted to include some photographs of what we can achieve in the downtown area in, in the, in the placemaking category that can quickly and relatively easily be achieved in the very near term. So we're not even talking three to five years here, we're talking things that can be done in the next season, or perhaps two. Number one, and this was an area we received a lot of public support for, was, was increased amounts of decorative lighting. And we certainly see the impacts of that because our Parks Department is already ahead of us on this one, has, in this holiday season, had more decorative lighting than in the past, and I've heard lots of compliments about the downtown area in that regard. The other one is this notion of public art. So we already have a very robust art community in the downtown area. It's something that our residents value. We can also make that functional. This is one of my favorite examples of that, a crosswalk that is marked. So not only does this type of activity enhance the appearance of downtown, but it also has safety aspects by reminding drivers and other users of the street that this is an area where pedestrians are welcome to be. And, let's see, next we get into public spaces and walkability. Again, this is an area where we received a lot of public feedback, and some of the proposals that were initially mentioned turned out, you know, to be, our experts helped advise us on which ones were most likely to be successful in our area. So one we heard a lot about was the potential of a pedestrian mall, closing down a street, making it pedestrian-only, and we were encouraged that, to be cautious in that regard and not to get ahead of ourselves, that other methods might be more effective, because many communities have found unfortunately that if you close down a street too soon, or you can have a very negative impact on those local businesses. So we don't want to do anything in the downtown area that's going to hurt any of the individuals who have already invested a great deal in that area. So, but we can still achieve that feeling and that desire, and that's looking at some of the innovations in what's called a shared space model. So that picture you see there on your left or your right, I don't know, the one with the bikes, depending on which direction you're looking, my left, is a shared street example. This notion that the street and the public right-of-way can be merged in a way beyond traditional streets and sidewalks, so that it is something that is usable by everyone, and so when you do close it down for special events, it has a different feeling. It is much more appealing to be in a public plaza-type place than it is to be in a big, you know, sun-parched street, although I think we all might appreciate a little more sunshine these days. The other one is public spaces in terms of public plazas. We heard a lot from residents about a desire to have more places for public gatherings. And here's where we kind of, as a downtown, luck out, because we already have a public plaza in front of the Law and Justice Center, and I'll talk about that more in just a moment, although I'm not talking fast enough because I'm running out of time. But I'll talk about that more in a moment, but this notion that downtown is more than just a place to go for a single destination, but that it is, it is a destination in and of itself. And the final area we looked at in terms of that supportive was parking, and I, I use this illustration to highlight one of the recommendations that we would encourage you to look at. And before I go into that, though, I want to back up for a moment and, and make sure that it's clear, when I say recommendation, the task force is intimately aware, it was throughout this process, that it was a limited process, and that while we may make recommendations, a great deal more due diligence needs to be taken before any of these particular recommendations can be followed through by council. This is a good example of this. So we made some recommendations with regard to parking. We fully expect and hope that if the council is interested in exploring that, that it send it on, for example, in this particular instance, to the, the traffic, or the Transportation Advisory Commission, someone to look at it in more detail and tell us if we're missing anything. But on the surface, we see merit to this potential idea, because when it came to parking, we heard from many people a desire to improve parking in downtown. And the report goes into some of the, the interesting things that were uncovered in expectations versus reality, and what is, what is an acceptable amount of parking in a downtown area. But we did notice that in the short term, we can change some of those perceptions, because the perception is the downtown lacks sufficient accessible parking, right? I mean, this is, I'm sure, not a surprise to any of you. So one of the recommendations is to take Main and Center, reduce it from two lanes down to one, so that both sides of the street can have diagonal parking. I mean, this is, I'm sure, not a surprise to any of you. So one of the recommendations is to take Main and Center, reduce it from two lanes down to one, so that both sides of the street can have diagonal parking. And I use this particular portion of Main Street because you can see the incredible difference in amount of parking spaces you get from diagonal versus parallel. And this is a relatively quick and easy way to increase the amount of parking in the downtown area in the short term. Now, I'm not going to tell you that's a long-term fix. It is not, but when it comes to bringing new people to downtown and changing some perceptions, something like this could be effective. But there may be things that we haven't thought about. This does require getting rid of one lane of traffic, and there are some downsides to that, primary one being there's some degree of interest in the community in taking Main and Center back to bidirectional traffic as opposed to one-way. But anyway, the recommendation in the short term is to change that to really deal with one of these perceptions we have in downtown and honestly, a negative perception. So back to a couple of areas of opportunity in the very, very short term that I would like the council to at least think about in terms of moving forward. Both of these pictures, number one, the one on the left is a street. As you can see, that's Front Street. It's in terrible condition. It's gotten significantly worse because of the infrastructure that was performed this summer, and it needs to be resurfaced. In fact, the Public Works Department, tentatively, it's my understanding, tentatively has both Front and Jefferson in the downtown area on the resurfacing plan for next year. So that creates opportunity. Now is the time, if council wants to do something different, to look at different models, because once we resurface those streets, they're good for 15 or 30 years, depending on how long we get, hopefully 30. So there's an opportunity and a window that is closing. To the right there, that's getting back to that public plaza and the fact that residents in the community would like more opportunities for having public areas. And I got a lot of criticism. I actually gave a question and answer at the History Museum, and a couple of people came up to me afterward and said that somehow I managed to take the one good picture of the Law and Justice Center public plaza that makes it look too nice, which, but I think it shows to you, the infrastructure is there, the facility is there, it is underutilized. And whenever we're talking about biggest bang for your buck, if we can take an underutilized part of the city and figure out a way to utilize it to its fullest potential, that's wonderful because we don't have to put in the infrastructure. All we have to do is partner with the county to make that a desirable space, partner with the county to allow our downtown development district to program there, to have events in that area. And back to the shared street model. So as I mentioned, Jefferson Street is up for resurfacing. One thing the council may want to consider is whether we want to try something different. And these are some of the shared street models. There's no single model, so when I share, say, "shared street," it means a lot of different things. Some of them look more like a traditional street, some of them look less like a traditional street, but you can see how in a downtown area, this creates a different feeling, a different ambiance, a different way of using and interacting with the public right-of-way, and actually recapturing that public right-of-way, which is pretty prime area in a downtown so that everyone can use it. But this is an area where we'd have to put a lot of time and thought into what that would look like if we were interested in moving forward in Bloomington. So what I would suggest is if council were interested in exploring this further, that we consider a pilot project just on the northern block of Jefferson Street that is bordering the History Museum, that that square is considered to be, you know, an area of prime use in terms of public events. It has the farmer's market every Saturday, that we might consider whether or not we want to do a pilot project there to see what we can achieve, to see what we can do in the downtown area. And I believe that is it. I apologize for being a little over time, but thank you very much for your time and consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions, and we of course have members of the task force who may want to jump in.
Thank you to this chair and this task force, and thank you task force members who are here who have worked very long and diligently on this. Council, discussion, Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you for all the work on this. How would we begin to quantify money that might be, for example, if we did what you just were speaking about, about the changing the look and feel of around the courthouse? Do we need, do we have like general dollar figures for that?
We do not, and that's one of the limitations, I think, of the task force. We were very aware that the task force was not empowered, and I'm not suggesting it should have been, but it was not empowered to use any staff resources or to do outside studies, and so we did not. I think that this would be an area where perhaps if the council was interested, perhaps the Public Works Department could provide us with some concept or some way to get that information.
Alderman Black, Alderman Hellman was first? Hellman and Black.
I just wanted to say thank you to the task force for the work that was put in. I came to a couple of meetings and some of the public meetings as well, and the discussions were robust, and I saw things suggested that I never would have thought of for downtown. That's why I'm not a city planner, but just the idea that we, there is so much potential and the way that the task force looked at potentially bringing that forward. So thanks to everybody that helped with that.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say we're just scratching the surface of what's possible.
Alderman Black and Matthew.
Thank you, and thank you Amelia for putting all this together and taking the leadership and crafting this to the very end here, especially this presentation. I think this does a really good job of encapsulating some visuals and some things that we can do. Looking through the packet, it had really noted that this is discussion only, and I feel like we've been discussing downtown a lot. Is there a vision to bring back actual ordinance recommendations to accomplish some of the things highlighted in this plan?
I think, and I think that's the council's discretion. I certainly would defer to the mayor if he has a specific idea for how to move forward. I think as task force chair, what I would like to see is the council ratify the recommendations in the final task force report because I think that would empower staff to begin looking into some of the proposals.
So from where I sit, in my conversations with residents and people that I know, I hear again and again, what can you do about making downtown more inviting? There should be festivals every weekend, you should be doing musicals, you should have, you know, art, I mean, make it lively. And people time and time again talk about how great First Friday is, but that's only one day during the month. We talk about SMART goals a lot here, and maybe we partner with the Convention and Visitors Bureau for the summer and say, "Our goal is to have one music festival a month this summer." You know, we've talked about doing like a movie in the park in front of the BCPA. These are things that don't cost a lot of money but can make a major impact. I'm reminded of a couple of years ago when we adjusted some of our ordinances to allow for sidewalk cafes and allowing for, like I know Rosie's does that, doing some field research to make sure everything was okay, but it's very popular. And that, those are the kind of things that people want to go see. The Blues Festival is huge. I mean, that draws thousands of people downtown. And what I continue to hear is people want those types of things to happen, and how do we enable those things to continue? From a policy standpoint, you know, I remember almost five years ago now talking about shutting down Main Street from 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. I mean, let's try it out, let's give it a whirl. The parking, if you go back to that slide, you kind of had a different interpretation, that one with the parallel parking and then the angled parking. You had a slightly different interpretation than I saw of it. I see this all the time downtown. People for some reason are adverse to parallel parking and will drive a block to go in an angled spot when there's sufficient parking if you, you know, can just back in and just do the parallel parking. So if that's the case and that's the flavor of the community, then we need to accommodate that to drive those visitors down there. I'm a big believer too that we need to be having paid parking, they should be metered and a dollar an hour, and if you buy a cup of coffee or get a sandwich or whatever it might be, buy something, you can get your ticket comped. These are the types of things that can be revenue generators for us, that can fund some of these types of projects. I guess in summary, I would say, I would really encourage the mayor and this council to seriously consider these types of proposals to actually make some definitive changes to our downtown. It's great, it's an asset, but we could be doing a lot more with it, and I think the residents would find that to be an asset for them, and I think there's a lot of value in the things that we're talking about, even outside of a catalyst project. I mean, this stuff appears incontrovertible. I mean, we can all talk about adjusting parking and putting up murals and those sorts of things, and I just want to make it happen. I don't want to sit here six months from now and talk about what a great report that was.
Right. No, I absolutely agree, and thank you. And I'd be willing to work with any of you, come up with some of my stuff on my own, but preferably to work together about ordinances. If you've got ideas or even two or three pieces of ideas, please let us know as we move forward. Alderman, Matthew.
Well, my first thought is, I'll hold the camera for the Scott Black parallel parking driving video that we're going to make to put out on YouTube, so.
I'm an expert.
Happy to take care of that for you, Scott. And Mayor, thank you for that, and Scott, thank you for asking for some of those questions. You know, there was some, I've obviously been downtown for a very long time, and there were things that I learned as part of this process, again, that I thought I knew as well. One of the big things that we heard a lot of from property owners all over downtown is they want the ability to do more. They feel like right now that they're constrained in terms of things like the ability to do decorative lighting outdoors, and, you know, we heard multiple requests from people that they want to do more plantings and more flowerpots and more decorations and things of that nature. So I also heard from multiple owners that we changed an ordinance so that we could have outdoor cafes, but there's still ordinances in places that stop stores from having outdoor, like sidewalk sales and things of that nature as well. So you can't even apply for a special permit for a weekend as far as I understand. So those are things we might want to look at and maybe we can make simple changes to allow people to do more stuff of that nature.
You want to work on a sidewalk sale ordinance?
We can talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah. I love sidewalk sales. You know, one of my, I was just going to point out, one of my favorite conversations that came out of this entire process was the idea of designated the entire downtown as a park, and that would change perceptions. Right now, the majority of the plantings that are happening in the downtown are done by Public Works guys, and I kind of wonder what the difference that we would see where if it was Parks and Recs in charge of designing, what's going to happen and how it's going to happen versus Public Works, and you know, nothing against Public Works at all.
Jay's blood pressure's a rising.
No, I've already talked to him about this.
Oh, you have?
It was one of the discussions we had, but it's just a, I don't know, maybe it's a right-brain, left-brain type of thing when it comes to looking at designs. I would be horrible at planting anything of that nature, but I'm not that artistic type like the guys who designed the Parks and Recs plantings are. So I thought that was a really cool concept. Alderman Bray had the idea originally, I think it was hers, of closing down that 100 block of Jefferson, that little stretch as a test pilot in between the History Museum and the buildings across the street there. I thought that was a really cool idea that came out of this as well. And, you know, it didn't necessarily come out of this, but I think that one of the results that we can talk about when we're talking about public artwork, one of my favorite things to watch all summer long was all the electrical boxes getting painted. You know, different, I wouldn't even see it happening, and I just walked by, like, when did that one just get painted? That was really cool. I liked the dinosaur in the box over by the Lincoln Center parking deck. So, you know, I think a lot of what we're talking about, a lot of the easy things here is empowering people to keep going and let them do more, and not just basically get out of their way and let people go forward and be awesome. So, you know, and thank you to everybody else who was on the task force.
And that maybe, did you guys take a look at some of the ordinances that we may currently have on the books that we could just get rid of?
I think.
Or maybe get rid of is a little strong. Okay, I jumped to things.
But I know that, I know that Planning has been doing a comprehensive signage report that they've been working on, and so a couple of things that we talked about, we got delayed to say, okay, we're just going to wait to see what Planning comes forward with their signage plan in terms of what they can do there. And, you know, at one of the meetings Katie had said that maybe we can incorporate some of the changes in decorative lighting and Christmas lightings and things of that nature into that signage plan as well. So we touched on it a little bit, but we also didn't have a lot of time, and, you know, we also wanted to make sure that we had the council's feedback on what to actually spend time on. We spitballed a ton of ideas and we had some great conversations that came up, but now it's the council to say what we're interested in and where we want staff to spend time looking at ordinances, so.
And one of the ordinances, the sidewalk cafe we're in, that is almost three years old, is something that we were going to look at after a year, and we haven't looked at it after a year. Like Rosie's, it requires some sort of, you know, area to be roped off. That's not the case in normal, and that's not the case in most cities.
I think, I think it's only if you have alcohol, right?
Alcohol, and you can, there are places where they serve alcohol and it's not roped off, and it, Rome doesn't fall. So again, it could be another possibility that we may have more activity outside. Now, obviously, it wouldn't be today, but there might be times where people might be more interested in.
It's going to be 51 on Thursday. That might be enough for some people.
Okay, that might be. And the other thing, in terms of parallel parking, Alderman Black, unless you might get a raise or something, but as of 2019, there will be a model Audi, I have no stock in Audi, I have no stock in anything, I don't have money, where you will have a car that will automatically parallel park for you. So the cars that drive for you are not that far around the corner. If they're parallel parked for you, they can do a lot of things, FYI. Other comments by members of the, yes, which, you have the floor.
I just wanted to, when Alderman Black was talking, it reminded me of something that I wanted to share with you all, is that many of these proposals are interrelated, and I think parking is an excellent one. On page nine of the final report, we talk about some findings from the downtown strategy plan that I thought were very, very educational, because the one thing we heard as a task force is there is a perception we lack adequate parking in downtown, but the reality is we have plenty of parking. But there's a reason we have a perception issue, and that has to do with the willingness to walk scale. And then in downtown Bloomington, the willingness to walk is about 500 feet. In a fully robust revitalized downtown, you can expect something almost three times as far. And, you know, we could tell people just walk farther, but I think we would be unsuccessful in that because there's a reason people don't want to walk in our downtown, it's because it lacks walkability. So it's kind of interrelated. We do these other things to improve walkability, and the feelings in downtown make it more interesting to walk, we may see some of those parking perceptions change and that desire or that willingness to walk farther, to go further. So really, a lot of these proposals are very interrelated and.
And we are requiring strategic properties that we can't talk about.
Yes, those things that should not be named.
Right.
Yeah.
Other comments? Thank you very much.
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have one more question actually, and it's a follow-up to Scott's question. I'm looking on page 16 where there's additional areas of opportunity, and some of them, some of them really don't seem like they carry a price tag with them but may have very strong return on investment. For example, empowering the Historic Preservation Commission to evaluate buildings for S4, you know, make sure that our zoning changes, permanent public recycling bins, please. I mean, how do, what do we need to do, Mayor, to enable these?
Yeah, actually, Alderman, Alderman Schmidt and I have been talking about this for four and a half years, is what can we do for downtown? And I'm looking at Steve, I shouldn't be looking at you, Jeff, because I know we can do this, Steve and maybe others, is what can we do like they have in Uptown or lots of places where, or maybe even the Coliseum. Coliseum is another, might be another place, we could probably do this all at once, just to have some containers where you can recycle or put things in trash. They can be actually quite attractive, and how difficult would that be?
I guess I'm asking, for example, with Historic Preservation Commission, who tells HPC, "Do this"?
I don't know.
Pragmatically, how do these things happen?
I don't know that anybody tells them to do it.
Well, I mean, you know, here you go. Here's an agenda item we'd really like you to work on.
Well, I actually had this light on to answer the second question, the first question, and that is, we did triple the recycling bins downtown, and you can find those at the government center, and we can also continue to increase them. So we have tripled them recently and could continue to do that.
And then maybe that's something that we can talk to the Historic Preservation Committee. I will, I can, I'll talk to the chair and others to get them to talk about how they might help us in this endeavor. Okay? Alderman Black.
Yeah, I hear you, and I think that that's what we've done in the past. I mean, maybe if we came back with a resolution from this council saying that we're directing the Historic Preservation Commission or whatever.
Well, that would do it.
I mean, so there's nothing, there's no doubt about misinterpretation on what it is we're saying and the goals that we're trying to achieve.
And that, maybe, Steve, if we can do that, maybe we, I mean, this should be, this could even be a five-minute item for the next meeting. Okay? That's, we're moving on low-line fruit even as we speak. Thank you. Thank you, Jamie, too, and thank you, Kim, for serving on the board. Very much appreciate your ideas. Okay? All right. At this point, we move to our last item, is discussion and possible direction on the operational structure. operational structure of the John M. Scott Trust. And we have a review and discuss possible direction opportunities by the John M. Scott Trust. We start out with a presentation by Mr. Jurgens, and as I understand it, we will have a few minutes for the John M. Scott's Commission Attorney and Ms. Skillrud to say a few words.
Yes, I thought if it's all right with you, Mayor, and the council, I would just kind of start with some very high-level remarks. Then we have Supervisor Skillrud here, who would like to offer a few comments, and Susie Yant from the Commission. We also have the Attorney for the Trust, Tom Herr, that is able to answer any questions as well. So, we'll try and keep this brief. The council memo provides kind of a high-level overview, but essentially, the last time we talked about this, there seemed to be what we consider to be a consensus or some growing direction to look at a model that focused more on grants from the trust as opposed to direct services. However, one of the items that was discussed by several council members was having kind of a revolving grant that could potentially go to Bloomington Township, that would continue to allow the supervisor in the township to continue to provide some direct services that was being advocated for by Supervisor Skillrud. So, we went back in a kind of a working group, worked on some revised documents. You now have in front of you an amended declaration of trust that sets up kind of this new format and this new programming, along with what would be new bylaws for the Commission. The Commission remains purely advisory. They would be responsible for evaluating and recommending a small number of grants, you know, say, four to five grants, to different organizations that provide kind of the medical services that were originally contemplated by Judge Scott. Again, one of those would potentially be to the Bloomington Township that could continue to provide the type of direct services that were being proposed by Supervisor Skillrud. These recommendations would then come from the Commission to the City Council as trustee. You guys would then have the ultimate say on whether or not you agreed with the grants that were being proposed and whether or not they should be funded or not, and how that money is going to be spent. A couple of caveats to all of this. This contemplates that we would dissolve the intergovernmental agreement with the township so that the township would no longer be serving as the administrator of this trust. Instead, we've looked at maybe doing an internal operation of that with our current Grants Coordinator, Jennifer Tony, potentially being that person that would help. We still need to kind of do some final evaluation as to what exactly those time commitments would be and what the reimbursement would be for that. So, that's something that we're still fine-tuning. If the council tonight were to say, yes, you're on the right direction, go back, make some final tweaks to this, come back and tell us what those numbers look like, what exactly that time commitment looks like, our next step would be to get together as a staff and to fine-tune that and narrow that down. But that would be one next step for staff. Two other quick things I would mention. The way that these documents are drafted, the, um, the Commission is a little bit of a different makeup than what we currently have. Currently, the Commission's made up of certain representatives from certain entities within the community. The new proposed makeup is to have certain disciplines, medical backgrounds, finance, administrative backgrounds, that type of thing, so there's not specific organizations that we will pull people from with limited exception to that. And under the proposed bylaws, it says that one of the members can be a representative from Bloomington Township or a representative of other township supervisors. You do have the option, and one of the things that was discussed was to just continue to require the supervisor of Bloomington Township to be a standing member of that Commission. And you can either have that in the bylaws or in the trust document. If it's in the trust document, we have to go back to court to revise that. If it's in the bylaws, that's just going to require your approval to have a little bit more flexibility and change that. The same goes with the how strict or how you want to set up that potential revolving grant to the City of Bloomington Township. The way it's in the documents in front of you tonight, it's in the bylaws, I believe, and so that would just essentially provide that the supervisor every year could propose that for one of those direct services grants, the Commission would evaluate that, make the recommendations to you as the trustee. We could have that a little bit, you know, more narrow or broader, depending on the temperature of the council, but that's how it's set up in the documents proposed to you. If you wanted to be more, an alternative to that would be to put it in the, in the actual trust document or more clearly in the bylaws that that is to be one of the potential grants that's, that's going to be considered each year, depending on there being a need for that. So, those are some of the high-level changes. Again, we really tonight wanted to just get back the most recent drafts to you, see if there continues to be a consensus to move to this type of a model, see if there are other tweaks, questions, issues that you as a council want to address that we can go back, reevaluate, come back eventually for final approval. We do, once we do kind of have that, you know, looking like we're getting close, we'll come back with an ordinance to authorize all of these changes, to dissolve the intergovernmental agreement, and then we will have to go into court to seek the, to amend the trust and do that amended declaration, and that's what will really get all of the changes going. Look at maybe implementing, you know, sometime in the future, make sure we have enough leave time to make all of these changes. But that's kind of the high-level overview of where we are and what's going on.
Just as a thousand-foot question that maybe I would ask of everybody is, what problem are we trying to fix?
Well, there are a couple, I think, problems that we're trying to fix. One, we're trying to make sure that we keep overhead as low as possible of the trust. We're trying to maximize the amount of people that are helped and served by the money that we're using from the trust. We're also trying to kind of navigate a changing healthcare landscape where people are getting their healthcare needs met in different ways from the government. So, there's, there's kind of been this changing landscape that's kind of created all of these differences recently that we're trying to address and navigate. One part of that, though, is I think continuing to maintain flexibility, because just because right now our healthcare system is set up this way, doesn't mean that next year or in three years it's going to be set up that way. So, the mere fact that we would, you know, potentially go to a grants model now may mean we, you know, in five years, maybe that doesn't make sense, depending on what the national landscape is and what the needs are of the community. But that, I would say, are the issues that we're trying to address and trying to solve.
Thank you.
And with that, if it's all right with the council, I turn it over to Supervisor Skillrud. Just a few quick comments or?
Okay. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak to you tonight. I do have a couple of positive changes that I'd like to express that I agree with in the amended documents, both the declaration of trust and the bylaws. And that is the clarification to serve all of McLean County. We have, as past practice, been doing that anyway, but it was nice to see that that clarification exists. Also, clarification of the staff administrator and the roles and responsibilities of the trustee and the commissioners. I think there are some good things in there, especially with conflict of interest as well. In reviewing the staff administrator information, I do think that this is, the amended documents do add more time to what's existing in the efforts to administrate additional, or take minutes and do additional reporting and administrative duties for the other committees that they're providing in there. I do have a few questions that I'd like you to ponder based on what you're seeing in the amended documents that I would love to have answers to, but if you don't have answers, I'll continue on with my questions until I'm done with my responses. First, is it the City Council's intention to transfer the trust dollars to a 501(c)(3)? In no response to that, I'll continue on as though we're not sure yet. The possibility for the trust to remain at the city, and with that, we're spending a lot of time and effort and money, probably, in terms of redoing the whole document. This document positions it for a 501(c)(3), and I, I think that what we have in an existing document that can be tweaked is far more supportive of fluctuations in the economy or the medical and health-related issues that may pop up. Right now, as the past practice and what has happened, is a fluctuation in grants already. Since 2014, when we knew Affordable Care Act was coming into play, grants have increased in terms of how much we've spent on grants and what's been budgeted for that. There has still maintained a direct services component of that. A lot of the direct services component needed tweaking as well, and that didn't happen at the time. Those tweaks could have benefited many more people in terms of those that are on Medicaid, but those services aren't being provided, and, uh, no income, those with no income, that could have helped as well. So, I just wanted to state that. Coming from the social service perspective, I see this on a daily basis in terms of what's presented at the township. So, not hearing a decision on whether this is going to transfer to a 501(c)(3), my next question is, why not be OMA compliant? The greatest transparency to a public, to the public is to abide by Open Meetings Act. If the Commission complied with Open Meetings Act, a lot of the redoing of the bylaws is not necessary. Article six, the meeting of the bylaws would not even be a part of it because it would be a part of the city. What the bylaws could be codified to add to the city code, just like any other commissions and committees. So, one thing that I wanted to bring up that I had learned through a conference that existed for Township Officials of Illinois, which is, again, a public body. According to Neil Olson, who is the, from the Office of the Attorney General, a public body is determined with the following factors. One, who appoints the members? Two, what the, what are the entities assigned duties? Three, is it accountable to any larger public body? And four, does the entity have a budget? I just ask you to revisit that because I do believe that it's in the spirit of the city and the City of Bloomington Township, any public body, that we become open and transparent, and what better way to do that than to abide by Open Meetings Act? Third, and lastly, there is a concern. I appreciate the fact, first, that the City of Bloomington Township was written in there as a revolving grant, but there are concerns with that, and I'm going to express that to you now. If it is the intent of the City Council to serve the population of McLean County residents in identifying the unmet need, I mean, identifying, identifying unmet need through a program such as Township, then we have an issue. Because the City of, uh, City of Bloomington Township serves only those individuals within the boundary of the City of Bloomington. So, who then would serve the other individuals of McLean County? If you say other townships, such as Normal Township, fine, well, and good, what about the extended areas of McLean County? I have an example that I want to share with you that just happened on December 19th. A mom and her 18-year-old son, who is an adult and is qualified, was qualified for John M. Scott, came into the office and were troubled because they didn't have Medicaid. It had lapsed, and so they were out of medication for his seizures. So, in that time period that they needed to become eligible, he was away from, this includes paperwork and eligibility criteria that we meet. In that timeframe, this individual went for one week without their medication. She came in one week later, this 18-year-old, who is from Hayworth, by the way, not Bloomington, from Hayworth, and fits, again, within the McLean County, had a seizure in our office, and this was the second seizure that day. And this mother was absolutely just distraught, horrified by the situation, but extremely grateful. We called 911, we got the information processed, called the pharmacy, worked it out so that this individual could get the medication immediately upon their release from the situation at the Township. The mother was absolutely emotional and said that she don't, she does not, did not know how she would have dealt with this, having no money and not having John M. Scott a part of that. This is what we see at Township. Yes, it's less frequently than it happened in the past, but it's because eligibility criteria hasn't been changed. This, I believe, is what John M. Scott intended as part of the trust. With direct services and grants, there is a fluctuation that can happen at any given time based on what the needs are of that period of time. So, I ask you to potentially reconsider your thoughts on that.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
Darn. Okay. So, the restriction that the City of Bloomington has is significant, it only deals with City of Bloomington, and that's something that we would need to address. So, in finalizing this, whether this become a City of Bloomington-administered John M. Scott program, or it remains at the City of Bloomington Township, which at this point we are at 4% administrative costs, so I find that our situation is very competitive in terms of how we're dealing with administratively. I believe that the direct services should be still considered, and I ask you to think through that. All right?
Very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyways, are there someone else on the?
I'm willing to address the council with my thoughts and comments. Superintendent is also here. I certainly do have questions.
Okay. Mr. Herr?
Uh, this-
But just to, just to clarify, once again, and I've asked this question before because I'm still somewhat confused.
Probably know the question.
And that is, as an attorney, you are, it seems that you are more representing the Scott Commissioners than the Scott Commission?
No, that's not correct.
Than you, because I think you and I have only spoken directly once about some of the details of this in four and a half years?
Well, most of my interaction has been with, from a legal standpoint, has been with Mr. Jurgens, the City Council, and the Commission, that is correct. And I've addressed the City Council as a whole, but from a legal standpoint, I represent the trustee, not the mayor, not the individual council members, the City of Bloomington as a trust. It's a little bit unusual. I have never seen it before, may never see it again, where you have a public body acting as a trustee in this fashion. So, admittedly, it may seem unusual, but I represent the trust, the entity itself. And so, my approach to this has been to take into account, first of all, the strategic planning process that the Commission went through, of which Deb Skillrud was the city's representative in that as the administrator of the trust, and she was certainly in some of those, some of those early planning meetings. The Commission also engaged an independent strategic planner, as my recollection, this is three years ago, two or three years ago, so some of the details are fuzzy. The City Council directed the Bronner Group to conduct an audit and an evaluation, and they also asked for my input, which I've given. I have a strong recommendation based upon the, that process, and also based upon my experience as a trust attorney, that the City Council consider this format. It's not a criticism of Deb Skillrud or the Township or the work that has been done, it's not a criticism of anyone, it's really a change in circumstances. And I think that, you know, this has been a lengthy process, and when I look at who is going to best determine who, the, the needs of the community, that lies with the healthcare professionals in the community. They have relied heavily on their own process, and every, I think every three years, they undergo a needs assessment on their own. All of the hospitals, the public, the mental health department, all of them have, have gone through this process. And I think they intend to continue to do that, and that would be an integral part of how the Commission determines what those needs are. In terms of the documents that exist themselves, it's my opinion they're no longer viable. I think the city has a significant risk in underserving and not meeting the needs as intended by the trust without taking some type of action. I think the, you know, I haven't looked at the, the numbers- I think the, you know, I haven't looked at the numbers in terms of number of patients served, but I think that the funds are currently being underutilized, and that should be a big motivator for the city to take some action here, to look at this program and how it's being run. So the trust itself is intended to be, for now and in the foreseeable future, and that's why it's drafted in the fashion that it is. The bylaws are intended to be more flexible. Ultimately, the final discretion resides with the court, but the city as trustee has certain, certain duties and responsibilities, which I think are fairly clear in the trust document, and provide flexibility, whether it's a township grant, McLean County residents, Bloomington is in McLean County, so they will be well-served. Appointment of commissioners, I think it's, a lot of this has been thought out very carefully by the stakeholders in this. And so it's my recommendation that you follow as best you can. Certainly, there's no pride of authorship in this trust document. It's based on a number of factors and input from all kinds of sources. And frankly, as Mr. Jurgens has probably discovered over years of representing municipalities, it's hard to have a client with many heads. So, different thoughts, and so I think, again, this.
And the main reason for the fact, I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there may be some monies that we're not utilizing, is that the Affordable Care Act has begun to provide some of these, but we're not sure that this will be around, at least in the form that it is?
Well, again, I think the, that was a motivating factor. You know, and the facts bear that out. The Bronner Group study, I think, is clear on that. You don't have to rely on anything other than, other than those facts. So that is correct. That was a motivating force behind, you know, the decline in the, in the number of people being served. There are also, though, a number of conflicts between the various documents. Prior legal counsel for the city did some of the resolutions and the intergovernmental agreements, and it was kind of piecemealed together. The bylaws didn't match up, and so that's why we were engaged to, to kind of re-engage, so to speak, to help with some of this. And so this is our best recommendation.
Okay. Alda Woman Schmidt, or trustees, no, that's right, we're not. You're Alda Woman Schmidt.
Whatever. I like this proposal a great deal, and I think it provides for a lot of flexibility. I particularly like the makeup of the commission and the way that it can represent a lot of different medical constituencies. I had a couple of questions. Ms. Skilrud asked a little bit about 501(c)(3), and when I look at the declaration, the amended declaration of trust, there's an article that speaks, that the administrative provisions talks about 501(c)(3). Is it the intention that this is a 501(c)(3), or is it a 501(c)(3)?
Well, I think it is by default.
That's what I was thinking too.
A 501, a city in and of itself is automatically a 501(c)(3) organization. You don't have to apply for tax-exempt status. There was some thought and some recommendation that I had made early, that possibly this become a separate 501(c)(3), where the city would take a step back, would still be ultimately the trustee, but it would be a totally separate entity, just as a degree of separation for liability purposes. If you're going to a grants-only program, I don't think it's necessary. The liability risk with, with a grants-only program is very minimal. Some of the language in here, I call it the safe harbor language for foundations and public charities, where we include language about conflicts of interest, no private benefit for any party, that type of thing, and that's all out of the Internal Revenue Code. They have sample model form. So some of that is right out of the code. So I did include those. And again, at some point in the future, if the city considers that they want a separate entity, that could be accomplished. Right now, I don't see any major tax reason or liability reason to do it, but that could change, you know, by an act of Congress, so.
And one thing that I'm unclear about, this does speak to McLean County residents. It looks like, and I'm looking at both of you, it looks as though there is a privilege to the City of Bloomington Township for a grant that is not privileged to any other township in McLean County. Is that right?
I don't know if I would call it a privilege. What I tried to do is, again, try to accommodate everybody's thoughts and input on this. And one of the considerations is the township. They have provided direct services over the years. And, you know, I wanted to make clear, based on my conversations, that they were an eligible grant recipient, but they were required to meet all of the requirements that any other group would meet. You can't really play favorites, anyway. So they would be an eligible township recipient. Frankly, it doesn't have to be in the trust document. It's there just to make it clear.
But any township could step forward and make a case for a grant.
That's correct.
And that would be something that would become part of the working documentation of the commission?
Correct.
Yeah.
Again, this provides the framework. Yeah, there's operational procedures. And I will point out that I did talk to Donna Hartwig about this, who talked with Ruth Ann Sikora Fraker, got her name right this time. And there kind of is a historical context for including McLean County residents, and that transpired over the years. And so that was a direct result of kind of her input, and I don't know how much formality there was to it with the city, but she certainly expanded the population base beyond Bloomington, which I think is appropriate. At the time this trust was drafted, I think Bloomington would have been more appropriate, so.
Can I just add one thing to that?
Please.
Maybe too much in the weeds here, but I do think one of the things that is an objective here is not to have 20 or 30 grants. I think they're looking at, you know, smaller, a smaller number of grants with high impact. So I think when you're potentially talking about Bloomington Township, you're obviously talking about potentially serving a large number of people. So it might be the situation that Bloomington Township might be able to make that case a little stronger than, say, you know, just pick, you know, Old Town Township or something like that. But again, that's, you know, anybody would be able to apply. They'd all have to meet that criteria. And the only reason that I kind of, you know, was one of the ones advocating for that to be in there was simply because I heard that from a lot of council members, saying, we have a long history of the township providing some of those direct services. We have Supervisor Skilred talking about the need for those direct services. So as to keep that at, at a higher level, you know, maybe we go ahead and reference that within the documents. But again, this is, as Tom said, you know, it's one of those things that's, that's obviously can be discussed further.
Other questions? Now, when we, if we were to finally act on this, actually, I have a question, Mr. Jurgens, real quick. If we were to finally act on this, we act as the city council rather than as the trustees or both?
Well, I think, that's an interesting question, but I think that technically you have to be acting as, almost as both, but you're, you know, it'd probably be on a city council agenda where you would do that, but you would be acting as trustees as well. Because when Tom goes into court, he's going to have to say, this is what the trustee is recommending and supporting. The way we're going to show that is by the, you know, a resolution or ordinance affecting that. Do you have any?
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Just to make sure that I understand, when we're talking about that the township would have to meet all reporting requirements, we're talking about like, I guess a lot of the conversations I have heard, the reporting for a lot of grants have, has shifted to the concept of outcomes, for patient outcomes and stuff. Is that what we're talking about, when we're talking about reporting? Or?
I'm going to defer.
Yeah. Like, in order to be eligible for the grant in future years, you have to report outcomes appropriately in order to?
We're seeing nods, but if you'll say, if we'll have the trust attorney.
Again, all of that would be part of the policies and procedures that are yet to be developed, including some of the staff administration issues. So this is conceptually, you know, the framework. In terms of how grants would typically be administered, there'd be some legal component of it where we verify their, their status as a, as an eligible grant recipient. And then, of course, there's the follow-up, which should be done really by the commission. And so some of their bylaws call for implementing those types of policies and procedures into their plan. Ultimately, what I think is important, that has been lacking in the past, is that all that information flows up in some type of reporting to the city council. We proposed on a quarterly basis, there'd be a report. And how much detail you want and how much detail goes into that, I would defer to, you know, I don't think you want to read 50, 60 pages every quarter on all the minutia, but maybe you do.
You'd be surprised what we read.
Yeah. So, so I think those things would be best in the hands of, you know, the healthcare providers and the grant recipients. From a legal standpoint, I just, we need to make sure they're eligible grant recipients, that they're 501(c)(3)'s, and that they meet the terms of the intended purpose of the trust. The follow-up, all of that, those are administrative procedures.
Okay. So actually, I just thought of a second question. I'm not sure who answers this one.
And Sue Grant would like to speak here, too, by the way. She is here from the commission.
Okay. Well, so my second question is, is one of the things that I was given to believe is that the, the commission, the trust has made some very wise investments in recent years and had been getting pretty good returns on the money that they've invested at this point. Who becomes, who is in charge of doing that part right now? Who's, who's the financial advisor now and who would be the financial advisor if we switch to this model?
Well, we'd maintain an investment committee, and that investment committee would, again, report to the city. The returns, I will defer to the, to, you know, you know, there's been some conversation about the returns, that they haven't been satisfactory. Maybe they should be a little higher. But that's, again, a trust should invest conservatively, so there's differing opinions on this. But, but again, the importance is to have the oversight of the investment committee in place, and that would continue. In terms of the investment advisor, it's Vanguard, as I recall, and perhaps Deb knows, can speak. And this, you know, is no fault, the returns, I really can't speak to that. I haven't delved into the rate of return, that sort of thing. But, you know, I don't think it's out of the norm.
Okay. Okay. If you wanted to say something about the Vanguard, then I'm going to turn this over to ask Sue to come up. Yes, please.
So in terms of the Vanguard returns, there is a question in the amended declaration of trust on 4.2. I did speak with the chairman of the investment committee about this, and there is a change of structure or a change in wording regarding the, the way that the funds are viewed. Right here, you can see that I have created a spreadsheet of a five-year rolling average and peaks and valleys of year-to-year changes. The, at the, the way that it exists now is a five-year rolling average to smooth out what funds you'd be able to receive, instead of a year-to-year-based planning, which to me is not as good. Because when you do year-to-year planning, then you might end up giving less grant monies to somebody, but they're basing their grant monies, they're receiving from you at a higher amount. But fluctuations in income from the trust can drastically affect what, how many dollars you're going to be able to receive. And this smoothing, I can send this to you. It's a smoothing chart. It shows that that's the better way to view the, the expendable income, is to smooth it over five years versus a one year.
Thank you very much. Sue.
Thank you, guys, for listening to us tonight. I'm Sue Grant. I'm chair of the John Scott Commission. We've talked a little bit about the decline in services, and if you remember back to the Bronner Report, the Bronner Report demonstrated that we've had a 63% decline in services since 2014. And while Deb tells you a very compelling story about a single person who walked in the door, what's really is happening in September, John Scott served one client. In October, they served one client, and in November, they served two clients. So we're looking at a bigger picture, not just those individuals that walk in the door. The entities that we are proposing receive grants, many of them already receive grants from township as well, are places like the Community Healthcare Clinic, the Center for Human Services, the Health Department, places that help the people that Deb talked, like that single individual that Deb talked to you about. What I just want you to remember is that we've, we've presented to you guys on several occasions, and we still believe that the all grants format will be the best thing for the future of Judge Scott's money, and that's really the goal. With sound financial management from the city, under an all-grant structure, there's a potential to nearly double what we're giving in grants right now. Grant funds will be used to address those same gaps in services that Deb talked to you about. We do do a community assessment, like Tom mentioned, every three years, so if new gaps arise, we will be able to address those. So I really think that moving to an all-grants is also in line with the city's strategic goal of services delivered in the most cost-effective and efficient manner, and that's really what we're looking for with Judge Scott's money.
Sue, I just have a question. So you were saying that in a month, there was only one person that the, John Scott, or that the township served?
Not township. We're only talking about John Scott services.
That's for evaluation.
Okay, hold on, just a second.
We're only talking about John Scott services. There really are no direct services paid for by John Scott that happen at that center other than transportation. Those people that could come in and qualify are all referred to other entities, the same entities that we're talking about giving to those grant funds to already.
Okay. Other questions, Sue? Thank you very much. Ms. Skilrud, if you wanted to, anything else you want to add to that?
You see the statistics on the supervisor's report? We do serve more than one individual. We serve transportation services to 60 medical visits and some other things as well. But that is on your supervisor's report every month, as well as monthly financials.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? At this point, we, we're not supposed to vote on this, so we don't have a vote on this, but any other future direction on this? Mr. Jurgens, if you want to?
Yeah, we would like to see, you know, see some feedback on this, some direction on this. So, you know, to the extent the council is ready to kind of let us know if we're on the right track, we're on track, that would be helpful so we can, you know, formulate that next step.
And then whatever you might present, or if you presented a couple of different options to us, that still doesn't bind us?
You mean, at the next?
At some point where we would actually make a decision.
Right. What we're trying to do is, is get to that next point where we give you something to kind of bind you and get you, you know, to make that decision.
Okay. I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding. Alderman Sage.
Jeff, would it be accurate to say that you're looking for feedback from the council based on the three options that are in?
No.
No? Okay.
That's a previous council memo. I think we're looking for feedback on the, and I apologize for potentially confusing that, but we're looking for feedback on the, the drafts that were provided of the amended declaration and the amended bylaws that set up this grant only system.
So, but it, the amendments support the grants, the all-grants model?
Exactly right.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Alderman now.
Jeff, and if we say, go in that direction, so what's the next step for you? What are you doing?
Yeah, so if you say, if everybody continues to shake their heads, go in this direction, then the next step is going to be for us to work out what this is going to look like in terms of the city taking over administration of it, what that expense may or may not be, who's going to do what. You know, as you heard some of the discussion, you know, it might not be realistic to have our city staff person take the minutes of the commission meetings and attend the commission meetings, but maybe it is realistic to have them kind of, you know, do the, the administration of the grants or something like that. So we have to sit down as a team and work through those issues, and then we would come back with a final proposal, some final documents for the council to approve, to move on to the next step, which we, which would be presenting them to a court.
Alda Woman Howman.
I was just going to say, I'm comfortable moving ahead with what we have here in front of us.
Okay. I'm going to just, real quick, these could be 10-second reactions. Alda Woman Bray? Alderman Black?
Probably in the minority, but I don't like the grants model.
Alderman, Alda Woman Schmidt?
I'd like to proceed with what's been presented this evening.
Alda Woman.
I would like to proceed as well.
Alda Woman Burgis?
Please.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think we have our direction. We move next to city manager's report. Mr. Rasmussen.
We have gotten several different items of guidance from the council on how to proceed. I'll move forward and I'll report back to you.
Okay. The only thing I first want to say is Happy New Year to everybody. I was luckily in California when we had the worst part of our weather. I came back to only one day of it. Anyway, but, and I also wanted to recognize Jim Fruin, but he left. Former Alderman, Jim Fruin. Jim, are you still there? Thank you so much for coming. Other than that, I have nothing else. Aldermanic discussion. Alderwoman Howman.
Thank you. Just wanted to recognize interim city manager, Rasmussen, in his interview with Mark Peterson today on WGLT. It was hopeful that we heard them both in the same room at the same time talking about common interests. On Tuesday, January 23rd, Alderman Mathie and I will be holding ward meetings, 5:30 to 7:00. And there'll be more information coming out. Nora's putting together a flyer and information for us. And I wanted to recognize that Harmony Park received a $25,000, $25,000 grant from State Farm to help with making Rolling Brook Park next year fully accessible park. The only reason I say that is it's my park. I mean, I live in Rolling Brook, so I mean, it's...
And it's your ward.
And it's my ward. But I'm, when Jay Teslov asked me if I would be willing to move the redo of Rolling Brook Park from this year to next year and told me why, it was like, well, that's really a no-brainer to do that. So there's a group that's continuing to work on fundraising, and we'll probably hear more about that in the coming months. So, thanks.
Alderwoman Schmidt.
Just a segue that Alderman Black, Alderman Sage and I will have a town hall meeting tomorrow evening from 6:30 to 8:00 in the ballroom of the BCPA with a focus on looking at the FY '19 budget and some of the tough decisions we have to make.
Be there or be square. You were going to say the same thing. At this point, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Moved by Alderman Black? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Alderman favorite signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?[1783.33]